You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 22 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council ARPA Workshop. You can find the information on this workshop by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
All right, we'll get started. Today is June 22 and this is one of three workshops for ARPA input from the community. This one is on public health and safety. And one of the things that we wanted to do is to have a small presentation from the Unity Foundation and Vibrant Communities. It actually came out of Vibrant Communities. So, we have Lauren Varga here and we'll start with this so that we can start our discussion and receive input and then we'll talk about some of the things that the council members that will be here, some of the things that they're looking at implementing as well when it comes to public health and safety. And again, public health and safety is not only in reference to policing and fire, we're also talking about mental health. We're talking about health factors and risks that impact the Michigan City community as well. So, I know when we say public health and safety, we tend to think of police and fire, but it's all encompassing when we start talking about the risk factors that impact our everyday citizens. So, with that being said, I would like to invite Lauren to come up and say a few words and we have a presentation that will be shared for everybody to review so that you kind of understand what we're trying to do as we move forward in funding. So, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. As a reminder, Vibrant Communities is a community betterment effort co-led by the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Unity Foundation, along with a diverse steering committee of 25 people from across La Porte County, including representation from Michigan City. More information about Vibrant Communities is available at vibrantlpcounty.com. I'm here today to introduce a friendly, easy-to-use tool on behalf of Vibrant Communities that was designed to help guide officials and stakeholders as they consider how to spend once-in-a-lifetime funds. And it's designed like a stoplight. Red is what should we stop doing? Yellow, what should we keep doing? Green, what should we start doing? So, we want to do things that will, in the green category, increase the tax base, create equitable results for those historically left out, assure we use smart growth principles, things that are sound and supported by research, things that will empower people and create stable government.
So, I would just hold on for a moment. Let's see if we can get your slides to advance.
Sure.
All right.
Great. So, here's our stoplight and the list of the green things that I just read off that we should start doing.
Oh, green?
Sure. So, green is what should we start doing? So, we want to do things that increase the tax base, that will increase population, that will create equitable results, assure smart growth principles, are sound and supported by research, empower people, and create stable government. Next up is yellow. I want to encourage that we keep doing things that will attract and retain businesses paying living wage jobs, support entrepreneurs, strengthen our youth and families, collaborate and bring groups together, and modernize our government operations. Next up, we'd like to stop doing things that will lead to population decreases, are short-lived or disempowering to people, have a low return on investment, or end up costing us more in the long run, are not equitable to groups in the long run, or things that kick the can down the road for future generations to deal with. And finally, we have a list of nine questions to answer as options are weighed. In 20 to 30 years, what will we be glad that we did? Is this idea supported by research and best practices? Does this end an issue that we've been kicking down the road? Will this hurt us if we didn't do it now? Are we in danger of losing something? Does this have a high return on investment? Is this idea connected to regional growth or assets? Does it have sticking power? Can it be done by the free market? If so, we don't need to do it. Does this action create momentum for other good stuff? Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
So, going back to this, so this came from the committee, number one. But one of the things that I want to make sure that people understood, and I know we didn't get a chance to, but if you can go back to the first stoplight, yeah, right there. So, you know, as we have about, you know, the $16 million, about two-thirds of it left, and we really need to think about what Lauren just shared with us with those questions on the last slide, you know, what should we stop doing? Are there things that we're just throwing money at and not getting a return? Not making an impact, because we're talking about impact, what we should keep doing and then what we should start doing. And that last slide, if you can go back to the last slide so that people can see that, this is where it's important for us as elected officials to make sure that we talk about kicking the can down the road or throwing dollars at things, but also can this be done by the free market? We know that we have other resources. There's a lot of money out there from the federal government and then momentum. So, these are just some things as we start talking and hearing from organizations that we need to think about. You know, if we know we have a homeless population, what are some things that we can do that are sustainable to reduce homelessness, for instance? I'm just giving an example. If there are mental health issues and we don't have resources, what are some things we should start doing differently? Or enhance? So, thank you for coming. I just wanted to make sure that we covered this as we start listening to what some of the organizations would like to share. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, what we're going to do here to talk a little bit more about a few different things. So, this is about public health and safety. And the ARPA money, right now, we've appropriated it with one more thing on the agenda would be about $4.9 million would have been appropriated after this next series of approvals if they go through. So, $4.9 million, we've expected to come up with a process for getting it out to the community, but this is to provide you all an update that that is something that we are working on. To my right, Councilwoman Delia Giegus and Brian Dabney are on the ARPA Committee along with myself. And I know that's one of the things that we would like to get done, to have a process in place for the community to be able to participate in some form or fashion. We've had a meeting where Maggie Sparks from the Unity Foundation came last week and she spoke about, you know, utilizing a system that they have for applications. And I know that most of you in the audience that our organizations have used that application to actually apply for grants. So, with that being said, last night at our council meeting, we had several members from the community that spoke about some of the needs and some of the things that they're seeing in their community, in their neighborhoods when it comes to crime, murders and different things, and even mentioned mental health. So, I'm going to allow folks that are online and in the audience, if they would like to talk about ARPA funding and what that will look like for their organizations, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address. And if you are with an organization or on a board, feel free to acknowledge them as well. So, with that being said, Mrs. Allen, thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you this evening. I was not aware that I was going to be speaking on what we do. I am at Minority Health Partners of La Porte County. I have been there since 2002. Our organization was founded in 1993 by the Indiana State Black Caucus, Indiana State Department of Health and Minority Health of Indianapolis. That's our parent office. Currently, we do workshops on diabetes, stroke, heart, cancer, COVID, breast cancer walk, you name it. I'm trying to think what we would spend money for. Is that what you would ask for next?
This is, we're trying to get money into the community and trying to meet needs. So, yes.
Well, I've been trying to start a program with the seniors at the Michigan City Housing. I'd like to do something with them because it's a mental health issue. They're, I always say they're incarcerated because they're stuck in that little spot. And I wanted to be able to take them to places that they don't normally get a chance to go. A couple of years back, we went to Holland, Michigan to the Tua Festival. There are things that they can see and do and enjoy and be able to get out and be about. I did give them a workshop on how to do the dial-a-ride. We have had four COVID testings down there. We partnered with Health Link. And so, I just wanted to bring a weekly program. It's like an exercise in cheer because many we have a program that's exercising in cheer and also our program is called Self-Help Skills. And that gives them the opportunity to say no to grandchildren, children, or anyone else that wants to come and ask for money to take their medication. They can stand up and say no. We teach them how to say no and how to respond and who to call in case they need help. This is a problem with a lot of seniors. They're raising their grandchildren and they don't know how to use the word "no." And so, they're suffering and they're afraid to tell you that they're being abused and they're being used and we want to put a stop to that. The other part of our program that's really important is the obesity program that we have been doing at Queen of All Saints School. We did it at Edgewood School and we did it at two daycares here in the city. The obesity problem is really bad for people of color. We don't eat the right foods. We don't get enough exercise. And a lot of times, we don't get the right medical information. And so, that's what our program is all about. Exercise, nutrition, and getting information. We teach the children how to read labels, how to know what those words mean, what to eat and what not to eat, what to buy. And we also include the parents. It's about buying fresh fruits and vegetables, exercising daily, and just getting out and being active with your children. Thus, that's the most important part of program for me. We do talk about diabetes. We have a diabetes program called DEEP and it's a six-weeks program. The people in the program or the clients in the program or participants, they learn to eat healthy, how to shop, when to shop, and where to shop. And you know, sometimes if you don't get the paper, then you miss a lot of ads. What day should you shop on? What food should you buy? And when should you eat and when should you not eat? Sometimes we eat too late. Sometimes we don't eat at all. And people that are seniors like myself, sometimes we don't eat healthy at all. We eat late at night, snack during the day, and then we have a problem with acid reflux. And that's a big problem with our diet. And the diet is a very important part along with exercise. And then we give them a book to go buy to take to the doctor. A lot of times, we go into the doctor and it's zip, zip, zip. You can go in with a person with you, have your questions on paper, and for that $150 they charge you per hour, you have a right to ask questions and to get answers. And sometimes if you're a senior and you go by yourself, you don't even have to be a senior. You forget what you're going to ask when you get there. But we can show you how to ask questions and you got to receive the answer. And the doctor will be kind and do that. But if you don't know, then you know you're just lost. So, that's some of the things that's very important to us.
I was going to add, are there any barriers that you're finding in providing the resources?
Some of the barriers would be having a place to hold the workshops. With the pandemic, like before the pandemic, it was not a problem. But Queen of All Saints has been very gracious to us and we have been allowed to go there and work with all the children, 2th through 8th grade. Pastor Johnson at Pentecostal Temple of Church of God in Christ has been very gracious and has allowed us to do programs there. We have had the mental health program there, diabetes program there, and we did our breast cancer walk from there. We also did four COVID testings there along with the Indiana State Department of Health and the Indiana State Troopers.
Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Allen? Any comments? Yes.
As far as any obstacles, in order to better, in order to better serve your program with establishing the additional organization for the seniors for the Michigan City, would you see that there's going to be a need for transportation? We don't, oh, the only program that we would have a need for transportation would be for the seniors. Other than that, we don't take, really take field trips with the youth because of the COVID. We haven't been taking field trips. Before, we took the children to Chicago along with Mr. Dabney. We took them to Indianapolis to see the Indiana, LeBron James played the Pacers. This is so they can get out of the city. Our field trip was to show them that there's something other than Michigan City. And so, we want to get back to that, but until this COVID is kind of like a little bit off to the side, we don't want to really take them anyplace out of the city. But we will take them to Chicago. We went to Rainforest, Magnificent Mile, and then we went to, I can't think of the name of the place, Mr. Dabney. We played the games.
Dave and Buster's?
It was like they had the simulated games in there. You could ride a car, you could ride a horse, fly an airplane, play basketball. We took the children there. I think we took 42 children and we didn't lose one.
How did you find that?
Well, I got money from the Indiana State Black Troopers and then I got money from the Jesse White tumblers of Chicago. My daughter was the former cheerleader and so he sponsored part of our trip.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're so welcome. Thank you for having me.
Anybody else want to talk about? Thank you. Before we start talking with the council, I don't know if Ms. Adams, you don't have anything? Okay. All right. Well, what's going on is actually, we're trying to receive input on public health and safety. But if not, we will gladly give you all of the things that we would like to do. But without the input from the community and what you would like to see as far as getting funding, it's going to be whatever we decide. So, and that's why it's important for the community to speak up. And now, I know last night I mentioned, because I know you walked in, that we talked about some of the things, and I'll just mention them because I know everybody can kind of expound on them, especially the former police chief. But you know, with the Department of Justice, a lot of the things that we talk about when we talk about crime, I guess I'll move on to crime, is that deterrence, incarceration isn't really a deterrent, but lighting is a deterrent. And we talked a lot about lighting. And I know at our meeting last week, we talked about getting a new list of lights. I think they said it's old, what, 2017? Yeah, they might have said. At the last time they did the, or 2016, that they did the last light study on lights that needs, yeah, inventory. Right. They said it was pretty old though, and we probably need to get something new. But lighting, I know that has been brought up by several different people, you know, because even with that, you know, with lighting, a young woman shared with us that, yes, I have a ring, but you can't see anything because the streetlights aren't lit up enough to even see what's going on. So, I'll let the council go on.
I was just going to ask about the lighting. Do you remember who did that? Do you know who did that? Because I believe it's Martin Obek from, I'm calling his name right, Martin Obek from Global Engineering. He did a map of all the streetlights for the Eastport Neighborhood Group. And we were working, getting there and working into that, and then COVID hit everybody out of all the buildings. But he had a real nice map that showed all of the streetlights and it had the little, talking about the poles that had lights on and the poles that didn't. So, I'm just wondering if he did that because he produced that pretty quickly for us.
Well, we, you know what? So, then I'm in the building with Jim. I guess I can ask Jim from Global Engineering if they have the inventory of those lights.
I messed it up five times.
And then maybe do an overlay of the hotspots because we have that. But one of the concerns, come on up, Mr. Vincent, one of the issues, we talked about hotspots and shots fired, but several people I've talked to say they haven't even called 911 to report it. So, it's probably underreported as far as the shots fired. Yes?
Michael Vincent, Vice President of Board of Works. So, just wanted to share that we have had requests for streetlights ad hoc, one here, one there. Somebody's not satisfied with the way that their area is lit and they've asked for street lighting, but that's just been, excuse me, ones or twos. I like the idea of, especially from a Board of Works aspect, here they are. Here's all the lights in the city and that would save a lot of time and a lot of grief for the public. Just they don't have to ask. We light it up for them, right?
We need a complete study. You know, I gave that to the mayor at one time and I guess it just fell on deaf ears. I just, also with the latest request for a streetlight to be installed, my question to the engineer was, what kind of light are we putting up? Are we continuing to put up the violet lights? I don't know if we noticed the other night when we left. We drive out here. I mean, it's almost like not having a light. I don't know how it shows up on a ring or anything like that, but it's, you know, you've seen that the bluish-purple glow.
It's like, that's not a deterrent.
No, we want our white, bright lights back, right?
I believe those are flawed. I think those need to be replaced.
I asked that question and they said those aren't flawed. That was the new design and from somewhere downstate Indiana, they come up with, this is a preferred lighting.
Lightings we did. Grove. Remember, what's the company that came in and did all those lightings?
On the poles?
Yeah.
It was about the globe and all of that.
Yeah, because they give the same reflection and you almost think that there's something just flawed with them.
Here, I have a question for you. Been on the Board of Works. Now, when you have a pole that just has a light that's out, that's a pretty simple process. There's a patch on the pole, go to Nippsco website, report the pole.
Right.
They'll come up and replace. How much does it cost to put a new pole in and then get a light?
I didn't, I didn't see a monetary, but the last one we put up was out in the area on the other side of the prison, just on one of the Indiana Abs or one of the streets out there. And it was completely dark. We drove out and looked. The engineer went out and saw that there was a pole already up there. It was already wired. So, he said that is very minimal cost. If the pole is already up, it's already wired in, all they have to do is just put the unit up and just attach a couple of wires and some bolts. They said that was very minimalist and I don't know what it costs per kilowatt or anything like that.
Brand new one. Because a lot of the requests that we hear, people are asking for new ones. If you pay attention in your neighborhood, now if you go back to the old neighborhoods where you lived growing up or something like that, like I remember a pole used to be here. Now they're gone. So, I don't know when we.
Did they actually remove the poles?
It's like the poles have been removed.
And not only that, if I could add to that.
We're not able to hear some of you. When you pull your microphones closer when you speak. I'm sorry. Jean and you as well.
Okay. There is also a Nippsco pole and I reported it. I turned it in and there used to be a light on top of there. I was told that the neighbors would either need to go in together to have that light reinstalled and pay for the expense themselves. I have the.
Yeah, I used to pay for one. So, I mean, so I know with lighting that, so I think a study is needed because maybe that's something that we need to decide on whether we need to take it. But I had a rental property and it was an alley and I had to pay monthly for the pole.
Then let me ask that question then to the Board of Works, Mr. Vincent. Is it because if it's in the alley, then they may say that the residence is responsible?
I'm not sure of that. I've not, I've not had any requests come through that residents had to pay. It's been city-owned poles and city-owned lights that needed repair.
Yeah, I had one at Long Beach Grove. Just as you enter, there was a pole and they were complaining about there not being enough light out there. Well, I came to the Board of Works and we got a light out there at the cause of the city, I guess, because they didn't pay for it.
Yeah, we've done, we've done a couple of those instances and that's, I was sitting here and my ears perked up when you talked about doing a, doing a study of the entire city and getting all of those back on. It's like, wow, yeah, we could get all that done all at once and not just one at a time Board of Works requests.
Probably cheaper.
Yeah, cheaper and more efficient. Just get it done.
Yes, Paul.
You know, talking about the lighting, I think that there's a lot of issues, but one of the things that we should reflect on is that we were converting all these lights and we were supposed to have such a big savings on the lights. I think we have to look at what the initial savings was or is. And I agree with Mr. Vincent on these violet preferred lighting on whoever made that concern. As I personally think that we need to start taking them lights down and put the old lights up.
Agreed.
Okay, and whatever the cost because Cleveland Ave, you really cannot see anything, but in the rest of the community, now I see that, is it? Anyway, talking about the lighting, poles to put up. You're talking about having a whole crew, so it's costly to put up a pole. And you have to look at what's existing to put lights up. So, in this whole big picture, we need to look at crime and the neighborhood and what's going on in the neighborhood. And people, I think some areas of town need lighting in the alleys and to illuminate, you know, because I'll tell you, some of these alleys are dark. And I have a couple of them right on Franklin Street. And and I have a couple of them right on Franklin Street, now, who knows what could happen, we haven't. We've been fortunate, nothing's happened, but. I look at the business areas and where there's a lot of activity, it is a deterrent, just like. What was that program years ago where people used to turn on their porch lights, it was like a. And 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 you had like a a hand in the window for kids' safety or something, but. It it's, it's cheap. We have to do a broad community thing that, okay, you need to. Put your porch lights on and and run a efficient bulb in there. And we all have to, you know, do something, that's what I've done, I I converted the the lights to uh energy efficient lights, but. There's, we 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 can do that study, but. I think we need to look at what we already have and then go from there and and look at them.
And we may have. I'll I'll check with um Global Engineering, they may have a list of all the polls, they who owns them. And then the lights, and maybe that is a project that we get off the ground right away. I think that's an easy one to get that, get something like that done, especially if there's a. A company or organization we paid previously, we probably already paid them for the work part of the work.
I think Martin did that on his own for Eastwood, Eastport Neighborhood, he did that on his own. But he was able to go to some kind of GIS files and pull all this stuff up, so.
We get him to do it for everything.
I think so, I think so, yeah.
You did, okay, so that's a follow up. Yes. Yes, come, you can come on up, and then um we'll get to Mister uh Mister Bruce. Moment after we um, uh after Miss Miss Williams speaks.
Thank you.
That's Patricia Williams, uh four forty seven Walker Street, Michigan City, uh Indiana. Uh, as far as the polls are concerned, and it was before COVID had set in, Mister Dabney, uh uh Councilman Dabney had. Got with me and Mrs. Willis, and we were checking out the polls that you told us to check out to see if they had a number on them. And those polls that had numbers on them, they were already uh ready to go, right? If if they could install a light on them, right?
Yeah, the ones I've had around my house actually had the light, it was just out. And then, and that was probably four within the. Just the immediate range of my house, and I just went on their website, put the number in, and in two days. They came to put those up, and then I've had a couple around town that were like flickering and they same thing. I don't know what the difference is, cause you said it was not up.
I don't think it was a light.
Patch on it, you found it, that you showed.
Yes, we, and we went throughout the neighborhood, excuse me. Okay, uh, we went throughout the neighborhood checking different polls, not just in our area, but. A couple of other streets where it's very dark and crime can just breed there, and you can't even uh. Somebody drive a car through there, you could possibly hit them, that's how dark it is. But that was one of uh our concerns, uh, and also a deterrent for uh crime, uh. Not only just uh putting in uh the streetlights, we were uh asking for uh cameras. Where stop signs are are constantly being ran and and I I yell out at them all the time, slow down. You know, and my voice sounds starting to lose, so I can't be the the stop sign for everybody, but if I could, I would take pictures. And uh I think that's another deterrent, and the other issue that I wanted to talk about was the um. The vandalism, breaking windows and uh what do we do about those children, uh Mrs. Willis and I was discussing earlier today. That we don't want to uh see the kids go to jail or anything like that, but to make them responsible. If you have cameras in the area, you could catch them and then uh send them back to to the homes that they vandalize and um. Have them work, uh clean up the areas or lawn cutting, when we were talking about the the grass being over. Brown, they're putting funds into that to make sure the kids uh are supervised. And then cutting the grass uh for the homeowners, you know, and doing the work for free, actually, but. The city is paying for the gas to do, you know, cut with the law, so those are some ideas that uh. Mrs. Willis had talked to me about earlier today, I didn't know we were gonna be discussing this, I just came here to find out about the workshop. And um how to utilize it and uh for our neighborhood. So that when we go to the meeting Tuesday, we can have something to bring to the board. And then we were talking also about uh Neighborhood Watch, how do we start that program, how do we get it going? Um, Mrs. Willis has some ideas on that, we have quite a few people. Who are ready to join in on that also, so these are some of the points that I'm glad I came here. Uh, to talk about, uh, see if we can, I can come back to her and see what your input is on it.
That's great, and I I know that we pre-COVID, um. Uh Clarence Hall, they started a neighborhood leadership academy. And um their goal is to do multiples each year. And and what it was based on is learning about the city, what all the departments do, how to call. The departments, um, you know, meet your council people, meet the mayor. It it talked about, you know, your neighborhood and and they brought speakers in and organizations around the community, nonprofits. And the goal is to create leaders in all of the wards. And maybe that's where the Neighborhood Watch people would have, by the now, we would have had. A couple of those, but COVID kind of shut that down, and I know he wants to start that back up in the fall possibly. But um I think that's a a great program, and what about the polls, I just wanna go back to this before. Uh, we have uh someone on Zoom, you know, it's, that's a good thing for intern to do. I, my first internship was with the power company, all I did was ride around and document polls. All day, every day, and I documented if they were rotten, if they, what they had on them. All of that, and it's a great for engineering students, you don't have to be licensed to do that. And you can pay them, and that's a great, I I learned a lot about the area. I drove around, that's all I did, was drive around all day, and target, I had to hit a neighborhood every week. And all I did for the whole summer after my freshman year in college is ride around and document Florida Power and Light polls. That's it. That could be a opportunity to pay some college students that are on the primary scholarship, or. Let them get their hours that way if they're engineers to it, so I think that might be a good opportunity.
Well, um, what about the idea with the young kids uh that abandoned line, yet banalizing?
Use for, I think that's something somebody can follow up on, I think it's a great idea.
That's something that could uh possibly be um. Discuss with our juvenile courts, with our juvenile probation departments, and that will fall under community service. As their part of their restitution.
Okay, because we don't wanna just say we did wrong and send them off to jail, we want them to learn from their errors, so.
We definitely don't.
And then uh giving them some type of structure with their lives, just, you know, know that they're responsible and have to be held accountable for. Their actions, and plus it'll help our neighborhood, you know, I'd um. I don't know what Mrs. Willis would think about this, I haven't presented it to her yet, but. We started to, I I started to mention to her about uh getting T-shirts for kids that. Would want to volunteer to help with the neighborhood too, I was gonna mention that to Mister Dabney.
Yes, yes, Dan.
Thank you, so I was gonna talk a little bit about how the questions to answer sheet, sheet, if we think about what we've heard yesterday. With the abandoned and derelict properties, I mean, an evaluation has to be made whether it's rehabable. Or needs to get going down, because we can spend our money on taking care of distressed properties. I mean, it helps the neighborhood more to rehab the property, obviously, or to put something up. Because vacant homes, I mean, you've been through Gary, you see like all those vacant homes that like really doesn't help the area, but. It's still better than a derelict property, but if you look at all these questions to answer, it's gonna help. And it's also gonna be, the free market will come in once some of it gets started, exactly, once it gets started. So there's a couple of programs, I think they had that Hoosier Homesteading Program, which kind of fell by the wayside, but I think we need to kind of look at something like that. To help people get into these homes, so someone lives there, not rentals, lives there. Takes care of the property, learns about how to take care of the property, so I I thought that. It would hit all these little checkmarks, and I think housing is a really big key, and it's related to all that, right? If you don't have abandoned properties that are, for, you know, that are all like windows broken and, you know, people just hanging out there. You know, that would be a big start, so I think we we need to look at that.
Um, yes, Bruce, um, we we can go ahead and let him speak.
Alright, thank, uh, I, uh, thank you, Bruce Dometich, Rita and I live at six nineteen Hobart. And we're very happy to be here in Michigan City, as several, you know, we're, we've just been here, uh, not quite a year. And so I, the 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 focus I have on on the uh deployment of the ERPA funds is is. In large part consistent with what people have already said, that. Uh, I advocate for serious consideration of infrastructure for streets, water and sewer. Um, I commented on this before, I didn't include the streets, but but. Consistent with comments that we heard from today, including from the council. The uh my sensibility is that we want to motivate, incentivize. Market development in the community, which in turn, incidentally, is going to increase uh municipal tax revenue. And increase the uh opportunities for a lot of the community projects that people have discussed so far. And and I, in the same vein, um, I don't have a sense, I'm not a civil engineer, of the cost of of. Streets, water, sewer, but I am aware that it's a very large price tag. And to me, a really important point about the deployment of the ERP funds is that. That Michigan City cannot sensibly impose some kind of tax burden on residents. That would be sufficient to raise the revenue for this kind of infrastructure projects. I I don't have a sense of the scale that that would be on an individual basis, but I'm confident. That it would be too much for most or all of Michigan City residents to shoulder that themselves, therefore. The availability of federal funds for this project is really a keystone to be able to focus on this infrastructure. Which again, in in return, is going to be the proper underlying for the the. Market development that again is going to uh help the city in terms of increased revenue. Increased opportunities for promoting these important projects that for the communities, so that's my vote.
Thank, thank you.
Yes, Dan, okay, I see that um Saif Sayed is online. And I could tell you a little bit about him, um, he's he's at UIC, and. I think together with Northwest Indiana just transitioned. They are trying to, they're gonna write up a proposal to get purple air monitors because Nipco is not monitoring the air. When they are cleaning up these coal ash ponds, and so you really don't know if things are airborne or not. And so if he would like to speak, he can kind of talk a little bit about the project and the proposal that he has.
Uh, hi Dahlia, thank you so much, um, thank you for the introduction, my name is Staff Sayad, um. I s- as Dahlia said, I study at UIC and uh currently just transitioned Northwest Indiana, is partnering with. Uh, UIC's College of Public Health with uh Professor Erdal to help set up. Air monitors um in Michigan City, um, so these air monitors. Are um here uh to monitor the Nipco excavation in Michigan City. And we hope to set up um a grid of thirty monitors within a one mile radius of the generating station. And uh, yeah, we're really excited to get this going, we've already set up one monitor, we have six more. Um, ready to install, um, we're currently getting locations, we're partnering with. Our local churches in the area, through the Northwest Ministers Conference, and the NAACP, the Port County Branch. Uh, they've been really helpful, um, helpful uh connecting us with. Uh, local residents in the area who could help host these monitors. And the goal really here is to help ensure public health and safety. Uh, including the workers at the facility and to um. Promote collaboration within the community through uh hosting these monitors, through uh. Potentially going to schools and teaching students about the importance of uh healthy, clean air. And um, yeah.
Is it soft, sa- safe? I don't wanna say it incorrectly.
Uh, it's safe, works great.
Safe, alright, thank you, uh, so you have one already installed, um, have you um sought any funding from? Nipco at all?
Uh, we have not. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we should make them pay for it too. At least match it, that's a great idea, so that, so that makes me think about the lead. Um, and I don't know if any, if uh if you have any comments, I know that we started a process. And then it flatlined um after we uh transitioned. Um, it's the best, transitioned, um. If you would, because I know that was something that um someone brought up to me um about um. Lead and if there is something that we could do.
So could tell Sa- Saif that he'll have a way to submit this, but maybe we'll be in touch with him about. Maybe you would be a good intermediary.
Yes, oh, you can come on up, as far as um applying, so that's the other thing, um. I'm working through that, um, which the the goal, I I think that all of us up here would like money to get into the community. Um, sooner than later, but we know that there has to be a way to apply and some parameters for that. And hopefully, and I sent another note out today, a follow up, um, to the mayor on um. Moving forward with uh some type of application process, cause that's what we're missing, an application process. So that hopefully that'll be something that happens within the next four weeks, at least that's the goal. But um I did wanna bring up the lead um issue because someone from uh. That was working on that project before brought it up to me, and um wanted to make sure we we mentioned that that might be some. Something that comes up again, but I know you were a part of that.
Uh, we were a part of that, we did a survey of the city, uh, we charted the houses on the west side, Lakeland, Eastport. And other areas of the city, and those, we have a map, uh, we have it color coded. Uh, we were in the process of putting uh door knockers on doors, especially those homes that. We knew that had lead or you could see it from the outside, uh, we had uh lead work uh lead workshops. And then we ceased uh after we transitioned, and so a lot of that information is still sitting there. We did home inspections, uh, we had uh residents from. Michigan City that applied for funds and they got them from Indianapolis and they had money to do improvement, but where that is. Now, I don't know, we still have the grant papers for that, and the papers to pass out if people want to apply, but I'm not sure if the. Money is still available to apply for that funding. We have a city map that's color coded.
So so you, the minority health partnership?
We we did a map, and it's color coded.
Yeah, I say, I believe we gave the rep the grant money back, um, so that might be an opportunity too.
And either we had uh three workers that worked on that pro- uh program, we had a Hispanic person that could speak the language of those Hispanic people that were lived on. Uh, quite a few lived over on the west side of town, um, she spoke, matter of fact, she spoke three languages, so. We didn't have a problem with that, but, you know, the map is available if anybody needs that map, we, I still have it.
Thank you.
And we're still willing to, we still have all the the equipment that we were doing to do the grant, so you know, that's still available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to know. Um, the other, um, did you have something, Brian?
Yeah, I was waiting, I was gonna go back.
Go ahead.
Asking the question about the lights.
Yes.
We moved on, we left light.
Let's go back to light. We, this is flexible, we're, 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 we adjust on the fly, go back.
I've been holding that for red light for a minute.
Alright, let's go.
Alright, it's all good. Um, and I was just writing some quick notes when we were talking about. Lighting, it seemed like we kind of had a, uh, consensus of the importance of lighting. So it looks as though now what we need, like the categories are, are three lights, one we obviously don't need to. Work with, but we need, uh, the lights that have the patch, that, that metal patch on it, that just have a light that's out. Those can be handled by any citizen, so we just need to put information out on how to do that. Um, the poles, we need to know the cost of a pole that doesn't have a light on top. Yeah, but does have a patch, because that's the, she saw something like that that had that patch on it, but there was no light. And NIPSCO wasn't in a big hurry to come running for those. Uh, so obviously there's gonna be some kind of cost. And then the big one is what we talked about, that has no pole at all, but I mean. You can come into my neighborhood and turn down the street and it's just pitch black. Uh, so I didn't. I remember running those streets when I was a kid, it had to be a light somewhere, um, else my mother wouldn't let me run around those streets. Um, so if we could get a cost, uh, estimates of, of something like that. The poles that have the, the light on, uh, without the light, that have the patch. And, uh, then the ones that where there's just no pole, or we may be looking to put something, we would need the cost on that, because I was coming down to spending those funds. How we're gonna do it, but, um.
But for that, I think that's, that, we don't even have to worry about an application process, because it's more about, this is. Uh, public health and safety, so you can look at it from a phase one and phase two. Phase one is low hanging fruit. That's the areas that have poles, whether they have a light or not.
Mm-hmm.
Purple or not, um, versus, um, nothing on there. Those we probably can wrap those all up and get those done faster than anything. And then look at the hotspots that are, have been identified, and then identify, you know, the top. You know, top ten, top twenty locations that need a pole.
And, um, that, when you see the, the map, I, I think I still have it folded up at home, but. When he put that thing together and, and laid it out, it had like a pole, then it had like a little triangle, and if it had a light up there, it was. Really in-depth. Um, so I'm, I'm sure he can do that again, unless they have that, that same type of, uh. Apparatus, but, you know, uh, reach out to him and ask, or you said you're right down there.
Well, I can ask, but, but if Martin did it, I think it might be easier just to, to ask Martin, because I won't run it if you have his email and stuff. I'd just run into him and say.
I'm sure she was involved at some point.
Right, yeah, so I, I think that's a good, but again, that's a good job for an intern.
So I'm, I'm off the lights now.
Alright, Paul.
Oh, you know, talking about this public's, uh, health and safety. Um, I, I think there's a couple of things that we need to look at with the intent of that ARP money. And one of them is the, uh, lead goosenecks on these homes, on their inlets, on their. Water supplies, we need to kickstart that and get them all done ASAP. And, uh, I, I believe there's quite a few, quite a few. And also, we need to look at our water supply system. Uh, I've, I've been told by, uh, some. Experts that these lead, or not lead, but the iron pipes, uh, on the delivery systems. Degradate over time with, uh, the, uh, just a natural. Time and, and being in the ground, we need to look at, we need to ask some questions to the water department. About their delivery system and, uh, jumpstart that and. We don't have to spend a lot of money. I think we need to look at new technology. On, uh, there are systems out there that they reline the pipes with fiberglass liners. And it saves a lot of money, a lot of money, and I think that, you know. That's a, that's a big one, um, the, uh, the water delivery system. And I think that's a big intent of that ARP money in category four.
And maybe, and maybe we can get them to match, because they got money. Well, and get them to help match us.
Well, yeah, but I mean, well, we, we need to, we need to kickstart it.
Yes.
And that's one of the big criterias, and we can't forget about that, that water delivery system.
And the lead goosenecks, I'm gonna write that down, because that's a part of that, that whole, just the lead in general for Michigan City, so that. That's also a good one. Uh, we, so the one thing I did need to bring up too, because I know that they had, had another event. Um, so the United Way has the, uh, they, they manage the La Porte County System of Care. And the system of care, they facilitate, I'm just gonna read it, so I don't mess it up. System of Care facilitates the identification of discussion about solutions for access to a full array of mental. And behavioral healthcare services for the youth in our community. Um, and, um. They identify specific challenges, barriers for youth involved in the system, as well as what is working well. Um, I know that they bring a host of, um, providers together. And I know that they would be seeking some type of funding. They are only operating off of a grant right now. They don't have like a, uh. Operational, but, um, it'd be nice if we had something specifically for Michigan City. That they could help facilitate versus, I, I know this is a county-wide thing, but, um, I know that they. Will be seeking some type of funding for, um, the mental health, um. Trying to put something together for that, so I didn't wanna leave that out. Um, that was, um, all I had as far as that. I know that we've talked about cameras. And I don't know what the, um, we've talked about cameras, uh, we've mentioned the ring, um. Uh, services, um, just a, an update, I did, like I said, I had a Zoom with their, one of their, um. Uh, they call them. Community success manager or something, and we did a Zoom and. Um, she talked really about the neighborhood app a lot, because with the neighborhood app, you don't have to have a ring. I didn't realize that, but they encourage it. Uh, and, uh, and they work collectively together now. I'll just say this, there's pros and cons out there for everything when it comes to cameras. Um, video surveillance and equity, um, so not saying it's the best solution, but it is a solution, and I think. Um, several neighborhoods may be in a place where they will welcome that. It may not be needed in all areas, but again. It's what the community has a hot, a tolerance for, right? Um, I know that we had talked about, I think right before we switched administrations. Um, there was a, it was, it was a sold-out house, but that was on license, license plate readers specifically. But I think we're at a juncture that a lot of us feel comfortable with cameras, and I think community members are feeling better.
Yeah, we, uh, we, we kind of, uh. Voted against that at, in the council meeting, Brian, remember? But I do, I regret doing that big time, we, we should have, we should have gone ahead and implemented that.
But with that being said, though, under past administration and different things. As far as why that equipment was going to be utilized. I understood why it was voted down, and I mean, I, I, I get it that maybe everybody wasn't on board in regards to that. If, if we had that transparency to know upfront and for sure, not from, um. The presentations that was given, but there was things that I even was aware of. Why this equipment and how that, some of that equipment was gonna be used. And so that deterred some of the reasons, I'm assuming, why it didn't get passed at that time.
Everyone was like, it's like Big Brother watching over us, but, you know, in reality. Uh, the police department already have that capability. That's, that's what we call running twenty-eights on plates. You know, you run a twenty-eight and the information come back to you within minutes.
But it was tied into eye catch.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, yes.
Um, we, we talked about some of this at our initial first meeting, and I know that. I, I brought up, uh, having cameras at some of these intersections that are, are bad for. Safety reasons, but also there's technology out there with, uh, um, readers. That, uh. It, it is some, some kind of really, uh, new. Technology that you put these readers up, and if a license plate comes up like on a stolen car. Or a whatever, it, it alerts the police department, and I don't know what the actual name is of the. Uh, program or the item is, but, you know, I, I think it's, it's like this, it's a tool. And they also have, I believe they have readers that are cameras that you can put up as long as you have the technology. That are wireless in a community and that can, uh, be transmitted out. There's a lot of technology out here, and it's a tool, and you don't have to have, if you're having problems in the area, I think that we need to look at these tools. And, y- you know, get educated on where we wanna go, um.
And with that being said, so, and I'm not sure if this is something that's doable, so these abandoned houses. Um, whenever someone or if the city is able to, um, assume own- ownership of this property. If we could utilize those homes. And to utilize some type of cameras to be installed on those homes and that the law enforcement would be able to monitor. Cause it's just, cause it can be attached to anything and then they.
Don't wait on the light, this is a council meeting, just jump in this dialogue.
Yeah, so, so, uh, I have been, uh, in contact with, uh, Kevin McGuire from the school district, and. You know, we do have our entire city networked with something called CBRS. It's our own private internet. Network, and we can put cameras up all over the city right now and get them streamed into the police department. Or anywhere else you can, and plus this has a lot more capabilities, so we have to partner with the schools to kind of use that system. It's also available to do, uh, internet access, low-income internet access all over the city. It's got a ton of possibilities, and I, I have been working with him and, uh, Chief Campbell, but also Chief Campbell is looking at something else as well. So I haven't heard the report on whether the system can talk to the system that Chief Campbell wants to use or. Just an independent, but the cameras could be up right away. I mean, they also could be solar powered, they would need power.
Oh, wow.
It's really, the technology is unbelievable. You missed that, you missed that little, uh, presentation that we had our last ARPA meeting, but like. He really has a lot of ideas for that, and there's a lot of potential.
Known all around the state right now on what he's doing, so that's great to hear. So that's probably, well, that sounds like a low-hanging fruit if they can get it done.
Yeah, and, and that's gonna be coming to the forefront here pretty quickly. Um, and talking with the chief of police, uh, regarding the system that he wants and, and like Jean asking to, do I remember that? That whole vote about those license plate readers, yeah, I remember that. Um, and I believe what happened in, in. Would shot it down was he, he was talking about it being placed on front of cars.
Yes.
And then people were saying, well, who's to say that you won't just target certain places? And, and that, so that, that really pushed everybody away from it the way it was, uh, going on. I wish I would have been thinking on my feet and said, well, hey, can we get these. Camera, uh, license plate readers and just place them all over the city. The interest isn't exits to the city.
Right.
So they wouldn't be targeted in certain neighborhoods, and I think that would have gone over a lot better if it had been done that way.
Yeah, it was just so many people in here.
It was, it was packed in here, I remember that.
So, uh, the other thing that, um, they, they showed that, uh, when I was looking at some of the, um. Studies was, um, really more about, uh, interactions and going to where youth are and. And programming, so I know we don't, we don't have any of, um. The youth organizations, because I think they're all nonprofits and they'll probably be there next week from what I've been told, but. Um, one of the deterrents was specifically around youth. And it talked about guns and it talked about going where they are, but it really talked about building trust. And, um, the trust-building aspect of it, and that has to be, that's programmed, and. You know, somebody will have to step up to the plate to, to do that, I mean, you know, as far as programming is concerned. Um, I know, um, I had a conversation, um, actually I had a conversation early with Paul, um. And, and I was just talking about, you know, I know as far as policing and police officers, we. We haven't had a full compliment in a long time, and looking at opportunities to have. Beach patrol officers, seasonal things, um, and maybe, um. Public safety officers of some sort that are patrolling, but not really policing. You know, they could be the ones that support, um, these derelict properties and. Because a lot of times it's more about consistency and having people visible. It's not really about leasing, it's about visibility of people supporting the neighborhood. And if you could have like, you know, if we had like these neighborhood, thinking like these neighborhood, um, watch. Maybe you have a neighborhood watch captain that is compensated in some sort of way. You know, whatever it might be, I, I'm just thinking outside of the box. It doesn't have to be a, a whole lot of money, but.
Yeah, that's, you, you implement that with the neighborhood watch program.
Right, and give them money to do stuff. Um, versus, you know, we're gonna do this because we wanna do it, but if we can give them. Give, you know, all the different neighborhoods, and you, we create our neighborhood, you know, boundaries. And say, okay, this group, if you wanna participate, you, you know, you gotta follow these rules, create a board. Of, of people that support and diverse in each neighborhood, age, is somebody from, uh, youth. You know, someone that's, you know, twenty, someone that, I mean, whatever that looks like. But give them money to do projects in the neighborhood themselves, because I would like to see what's at Walker Street. At a couple more parks, because if you pay the neighborhood to keep up with the. The park and to do different things, you know, we won't have to worry about hiring employees. I mean, because that's what it really was coming down to. These parks, we need to put stuff in there that they want, though, we need to ask them what they want. And then do it, but then give them the tools to keep up with it.
Right, if someone is there, even if they're not a highly compensated employee, but maybe just, just so there's a pair of eyes out there.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, because you, I mean, a lawnmower, you know, lawnmowers. And you give them something, you know, that they can do and, and keep up with it. But I, I, I just, you know, we don't need so much grass, number one, get rid of the grass, but ask the neighborhood what they want, because. A lot of it may not be some aging, some areas are aging more than others. And they may not want a playground, they may want this green space in the garden and whatever.
Right.
Right, whatever it might be. Yes. Yes. So, I mean, so those are things that we should think about with the neighborhood, you know, is there a group that would want to. You know, figure out how we do that, I don't know. I think Eastport and Elston Grove could be a. Uh, a model, see, see what they're doing, and then just look at how many, what, you know. Square, is it a ha- a half a mile square radius or whatever it is, but create all these. Square, is it a ha- a half a mile square radius or whatever it is, but create all these paths.
Yeah, if you could duplicate, duplicate uh duplicate that throughout the whole city then. And then just target certain people in those neighborhood uh.
And have a quarterly meeting, a council of some sort, I'm thinking, you know, all right, Bruce, yes.
Sure, I just, I, I mentioned this once before, I just wanted to throw this in, you know, so, sort of the Debbie Downer contribution in that is that. Just a reminder that to all of us, that there are, uh it's an ever increasing. Uh legal field of privacy laws and opportunities for uh causes of action for alleged. Um infringe upon privacy rights, including when government entities collect uh personal identifying information, so. It, just in the context of the discussion about the, the readers and the like, just a reminder that we um. I, I would like to ask that the city council be comfortable that it's aware of the. Legal boundaries on that to make sure that the city stays in the green, so we don't get some smart aleck lawyer from Chicago filing a lawsuit. Alleging of violation of privacy rights.
Thank you, smart aleck uh attorney from Chicago, you say, okay, thank you. But uh that was a good one, um and I think that was probably. That was what most people were talking about, that um, you know, you're gonna be targeting, but if we put it on the entryways and. You know, I think there's some, like you said, if, you know, some creative ways that. It's not targeting anybody, it's tar- targeting at any and everybody that comes into the city to make sure the city is safe, so. It's almost like um I think of Michigan when their little tourism, uh their visitor center. Anybody who came in or was going out of Michigan, get COVID tested for free. Because they wanna know who's coming in, that's the way to track people, you know.
So if you put cameras in all those streets that are, like people are running the red lights and, and whatever. They'll avoid them if they don't wanna be on camera.
And, and then when they start running the other ones, we put cameras there too, so I mean, I think there's, yeah, so I think that, that's an opportunity. Um, any additional comments from, from the, from the, yes? Or we can repeat it for you.
When we were doing the lead. Project here, we could not get anyone to release the names of the owners of all those dilapidated homes on the west side. Some of them out in Lakeland and I don't care who it's, they would say like somebody in Chicago or somebody in. In Wisconsin or whatever, but they would not release the name and I know they know the names of those, the owners of those homes. And, and that's a problem when you're trying to correct the lead problem here.
Well, Beacon has the.
City Hall up here, we didn't get any help.
Yeah, Beacon would have a contact information.
So, you know, if we try that again, we would really need the help of the city. And I'm on the clock, I have to be home before dark.
All right, before the streetlights go out. All right, so, so one of the things I know that we probably need to take back right away is the, the lighting, that's a. Easy one, and then Tuesday, the meeting um with uh Chief Campbell and the East, Eastport uh. Improvement group, I think that's gonna be um a good one, but like I said. It, it also talks about specifically about um youth and guns. Um, and it, it talks about building trust, but creating spaces that are community for them. And so, you know, we talk about Boys and Girls Club, we talk about the YMCA, but. Community um could mean something different. Um, for um youth, um whether it's someone that falls into the LGBTQ spectrum, I know we don't have. Anything for them, you know, we have um kids that, and not, not kids, young adults. That really don't have a place to go, um and it's, and a lot of them aren't athletic and don't care to be athletic. And I, I just don't think um right now. Um, I know there is a, a program and I, I cannot call her name, I can see her face, but um. With Johnny Stanley, the boxing, but the program that she runs over in Illinois, they have um. Not only boxing, they have a recording studio, they have a gaming, um, um, you know, center.
Even board games.
My daughter worked in a teen drop-in homeless center in Florida and they could check out control dish for the games. And, you know, and it was just a drop-in center, because they weren't going to school. Um, and that's why it made me think of, ma- made me think of you too, um, we have um Anthony Adams' house is here, but. It made me think about that teen drop-in center, it was a huge facility and it was only for runaway, you know, homeless teens. And while I say homeless, young adults, but they provided um resources to get them their GED. They provide assistance to get them um their first deposit on their apartment. But they could come there and use computers, the washrooms, but they could game. They could do gaming and they could do all those different things, cause everybody doesn't, like I said, play sports and. They wanna do things they like to do and, and without any pressure, and when I say pressure. Um, we know that what, I don't know, seventy percent of America is. They have legal marijuana, they do, and I know, and including my family. We have a lot of young adults that self-medicate with marijuana, it's just what it is. And I think a lot of times they don't want, a youth, young adults don't want to participate or go to different. Places because they feel judged, and I don't know how we get beyond that, I'm just bringing it up because it's a fact. Um, and um so, you know, and that was one of the studies I read, it was talking about gun violence and we're talking about. Um, the young man said, man, you know, I was so heated, I carry a weapon, I, I could have shot someone, but. He said, I, you know, did what I do and then I calmed down and looked back at him, it was like, what was I thinking? And so, we just need to understand the mental health piece of it and, and is, is a part of it. But um we have to find some of these mentors that can talk, talk to, to. Talk to these young adults in a, a very straightforward way, and I don't know how we do that right now. Um, but I know there's a gap there and I don't know what we do with it. Um, and who, who can solve that, because there's a gap. And I don't know, as a former police chief, what you think, but I, I believe there's, there is a, an exponentially. We use marijuana uses ex- exponentially increased over the years. And just remember, it's legal everywhere around us, within what, an hour's drive. Within actually thirty minutes, you got Michigan, you got Illinois. Right, right, so you got, you got Michigan, you have Illinois, I think even Ohio and now even Kentucky. And I, some of the states that I never thought would do it. Yes, are doing it, so. And, and then the last thing, um, I don't know if you all saw this today, um, but on the news. Um, talk specifically, they're working on, there's a bi- uh bipartisan safer communities act. And um we actually might get something done. Expands child and family mental health services, strengthens background checks for buyers of guns under age twenty-one. And we know what's happening in Indiana, clarifies who was considered a gun sailor, uh seller. Establishes new criminal offenses for gun trafficking. Bolsters crisis intervention programs and we have uh flag laws and closes the boyfriend loop. So this is this new um safer communities act, so there's gonna be money with that, but remember with the guns, we already know. Indiana is following several of the other states and I don't know what we do. You know, what we do with that um at this point, I don't know how we can deter that, maybe the chief will um. Have some recommendations for us for that.
And if so, I would, I would say that there needs to be more um communications to where our prosecuting attorney can come out. And speak so that individuals are aware of what that criminal act, if you actually just pull out. A gun, what those charges will be brought against that individual. The severity of it.
Yeah, cause I, I don't know what we do, guns, we know that's a problem, I just, I don't know what we do about it, so.
It's a huge problem.
And gun buybacks are not working, so, and if you let Lori likes letting everybody else talk about in Illinois, they're getting all the guns from us. In Indiana, so. I, I'm just saying, they have strict, they have really strict laws over there. Yeah, we're not, yeah. Yeah, so we, we really need to think about what we wanna do on the gun side, but um. That is all I have, um have unless um anybody has anything else, we didn't talk about those um spot, those uh shots. Yeah, we're gonna wrap up too.
Um, talking about these homes that are uh abandoned or, you, you know. Not taken care of in these neighborhoods. Uh, you know, I, I have been under the impression for a long time that. The city tears down too many homes and that we need that, we should change our philosophy on trying to. Get possession of these homes, rehab these homes and put. Public service officers in some of these homes as a program. For when they get hired, I remember I watched a program on uh, on this, on channel eleven that uh. Town in uh. Either South or North Carolina had, had done this, and, and they were putting police officers in, into uh. These homes in, in a lot of the neighborhoods down there. So it's, it's a thought to, to change the whole philosophy on tearing down these homes.
And, and there are organizations that can do that for us, we don't even have to, if we could secure the homes. And maybe they, we figure out how to give them and one of the things that will be interesting is. You know, making sure that they are, you know, current existing Michigan city residents that get those locations versus. Yes, you can't rent it out. No shirt, none of that, so we, we can do that, um, did you have something else, Miss Pat? Sorry. We're recording this, so we just wanna make sure, cause it's really truly just a conversation.
How to um speak to, say like if you do have one of those uh drop-in centers uh for children. And, and use an abandoned home and refix it up so they feel comfortable and have them participate in. Fixing up the place also, but, but children that are um self-medicating and how you relate to them. I think that uh people who have rehabbed. Uh, if, if the state or juvenile place or whatever have had recoveries from. We have, you can use those students or those children to uh talk to the other kids. Because a child will listen to another child who has been through it, so I, I was just wanting to give you an idea on that.
And, and I will say that um uh me and um Don Privilinski, we did do a visit to. Arrested home, uh and we have a. It might, uh it's a countywide commu- uh com- uh committee. But um we did a visit um in Valpo, they have multiple, which is interesting. They have multiple um, um locations. Um, for people who gone through recovery. And um are working, they have requirements, they have to go to, you know, AA, they have to do all these different things. And they have multiple locations where they keep expanding new facilities in Valparaiso. And people think, oh, it's a higher, you know, cost of living, duh, 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 uh. They're doing those things and so um the county, cities, it's both cities and county. Uh, we did a visit and we have a, a committee that's been meeting. Um, which uh Judge uh Greta Freeman, Friedman has been kinda leading the charge for that, because we're looking at. You know, where can we place something like that as a phase one approach, um, you know, because we don't have anything. That you can live in, you know, actually stay at, we, we have Swanson Center that, you know, supports the county. But we really truly don't have.
Well, I think that's a good start if you could uh get someone to. Allocate it and get it going, because that's what's been needed for a very long time. Uh, the kids don't have any place where they could go relate and if you get something like that, go, maybe someone from Valpo could come over here and. Um, started or get some ideas going to neighborhood watch par- uh parents.
Resource the university, they have access to.
Well, and that's what we, we, you know, one thing that I found is we ask not, we have not, because we ask not. And, and I think that's where uh the healthcare foundation. Um, they are not supporting just Laporte, they're supporting Laporte County now. And, and what they, they're finding is that. Uh, Laporte problem, a Michigan city problem is a Laporte county problem for everybody. And so, you know, I think we have to get our organizations um up to speed on. We can go ask for money from these different foundations.
So coincidentally, I went to a mental health meeting yesterday for the county, the countywide one. Where, and that's exactly what they were bringing up, is that we don't have support for people who. Whether they go to alcohol or drug rehab or come back from prison, when they come here, we don't have a support system and. We can't even house them, because we're out of housing for that, so that's really a critical lead, and so that is what they are working on. That's kind of the focus of this group is to try to get support for that, because that's a big gap and that was kind of just brought up because of the discussion that they had, so.
So I, so I think that wraparound, I think everything that we talked about is pretty much on the table. But the good thing about the conversation and having you speak yesterday and today. And uh is really, there are some things that we can do for the community that. Don't necessarily require an application, number one. Lights is probably the, one of the biggest ones that is a low hanging fruit, and, and those cameras. Um, but then, you know, still figuring out the application process, we can do that in parallel. So that like housing and those things, I think, yeah, yes, they have to apply for those, but, you know, maybe. Those abandoned homes and, and all of that, um, we know we haven't done any demolitions, that was brought up last night. Uh, and again, you know, you have residents talk about looking out the window. And just seeing, you know, dilapidated pro- you know, properties and people vandalizing it, so. Um, thank you for speaking up, um, does anybody else have anything they wanna offer before we wrap up and close out?
Well, I'm going to um uh brainstorm with Mrs. Willis and a couple other ladies and see what we can. Add to this conversation that we're having today and talk to Dabney about it next Tuesday, and maybe he can bring it back to your table.
Yeah, and there'll be a couple of us there on Tuesday. Thank you.
Hi Larry, good evening. Um, one thing I'll mention, you talk about vandalizing buildings. The building I'm rehabbing near the casino, I had windows busted five times last year from it. I got it on video once, I sent it to the police department, they watched and all that, and I was told. That because the kids looked like they were younger than twelve, the county prosecutor would not do anything about it. So even if people are vandalizing, if the police and the prosecutor won't do something about it, we've got a big problem. You know, I was told, well, I can identify the kids and I could sue them in small claims or something. Um, I mean, just identifying kids that are vandalizing. If there is no consequence for them, I I can't hit them. I can't spray it with a hose or anything else, I will be charged for child abuse. So there's, there's gotta be some consequences there, first of all, if you catch the vandals. Um, something else I'll point out as far as rehabbing houses. I've been in some of these houses, some of them are rehabble, some of them have unstable foundations. Uh, they're totally rotted, termite and all that, and there are a lot of houses in Michigan City that do just need to be. Torn down because the cost of rehab is more than building a new structure. Thank you.
But even with the property and the land, if we could put those little modulators or something on there.
If you have the land, correct. But you would still, there's still uh, the work it would take to make those structures habitable. Is excessive. One other thing I'll mention that other communities have done in the past, um as far as deterring crime or speeders. They've just taken old police vehicles. That they may still run, they may have to tow them or something, but they make them look like current police vehicles, and they just park them. Near those trouble spots, and then they move them around, and it really has deterred uh crime. In other cities.
Yeah, and we we talked about keeping some of the, keep some of the junk cars.
And they can't look junk, you have to keep good paint.
They got a lot of miles on the inside.
They don't look inside a police car, they just see the police car and they behave.
They did on the, they used to do it on the toll road, it slowed me down, so.
But we also gotta keep in mind that we're dealing with a different generation to where. Walking up to that police car or trying to say, Wes, been sitting here for five days, you know, new tech, let's, let's fix it up.
Come on, to the microphone, yes. You never know, yeah.
Good evening, uh Candace Nelson, Director of Anthony Adams' House. And um I just wanna say, I'm hearing some really good ideas, and it's a good thing that the city is looking to invest some of this money into the community. I know there's a lot of, I know you guys are doing like a series of three workshops. I just kinda heard about it, so, um that's why I kinda popped in to see what was going on, but I think it is a, it's public health and safety. I think the cameras are an excellent idea, you know, it just is what it is, some people may not like it, but when crime happens. You can just go to those cameras, you don't have to worry about snitching or whatever, you know, you have the cameras there. And um I know you guys are doing something for small businesses, so and not-for-profits, I'm just glad to see that the city is looking to invest back into the community. Some good information here tonight.
And hopefully you will be applying for some of that. Alright, did you have another comment, and then we'll wrap up.
One other thing as far as license plate readers and targeting and stuff like that. You have an expected right to privacy in your own home and even on your porch. But typically, you have no right to privacy on public grounds. The license plate you actually do not own is owned by the state, so you have no right of privacy there. And actually, uh, the information on a license plate is typically public knowledge, as is. The ownership of homes, and you can go to Beacon to get it, or you can just go down to County Records. And get the information on any property in the county. You know, tho- there is, there shouldn't be any privacy issues with any of that stuff.
Thank you. Well, again, thank you for um joining us today, um Monday is June. Twenty. Second, no, we're on the twen- twenty-seven, so June twenty-seventh at eleven-thirty, um. I know that the chamber's been sharing it, we're talking small business and workforce development, and then on the twenty-ninth. Um, neighborhoods, nonprofits and parks, which um uh will be at five-thirty here in the council chambers. So again, thank you for participating, and um hopefully we'll have a process for you in the next month or so. Um, to get some of these funds into the community, thank you.